Go ahead and call this meeting of September 5th, 2023 to order. And if you would please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Alun Bass.
Present.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Folkins.
Here. At this time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda as it has been presented to us.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Alun Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries. And at this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment this evening. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your name, and then if you would also write your name and your address for the clerk on the document that's been provided, that would be wonderful. Additionally, if you could keep your comments to three minutes or less, that's appreciated as well.
I'm Mike Williams, and I have had a second home on North Boulevard for over 30 years. I stayed there approximately 150 days a year. I consider myself a taxpaying resident of Cadillac, and I expect the same level of respect and consideration as any other resident. Before I retired 10 years ago, I was a licensed professional engineer in the state of Michigan, and I'm very used to consistent application of criteria and codes and standards. In the first zoning meeting in June, I listened intently to John's rather lengthy discussion on how the zoning criteria are being updated to current standards. In the end, maybe I was the only one listening. We have now scrapped the methodic...
We know what you're saying.
You know what I mean. Approach and are using survey results as the basis for changing the zoning of North Boulevard and my house. Worse, I think that the survey results are misleading. For example, STR benefits can only apply to the 15 houses that are being rezoned, and the community benefits would be only from those that rent. So maybe to have six houses that rent. Using 438 general responses is incorrect. I conclude that basing zoning changes on survey is probably nonsense. The standard is that commercial activities such as STRs are inconsistent with residential use. Go back to the original zoning option for all lakefront areas of the city of Cadillac. It is unfortunate that I have to say this, but the selection of North Boulevard and its subsequent hodgepodge zoning reeks of cronyism and perhaps even pay to play. I say this on the basis that financial benefits are to a few individuals are large. The community benefits are limited because there's only, say, six rentals. The zoning method is unconventional based on survey. The zoning change is not consistent. You have a couple houses here, a missing section, and some houses there. And the plan proceeds in the face of pretty considerable opposition. I don't know why you want to have this opposition for six houses. It doesn't make any sense to me. And imagine the firestorm if you would have just zoned Holly Road in the same fashion that you zoned North Boulevard. Lastly, you need to represent all the few Cadillac residents such as myself who will bear the burden of a STR neighbor, not only those that financially benefit from STRs. Please protect the peace and quiet and safety of my North Boulevard neighborhood and of all beautiful Cadillac lakefront areas. Thank you for your time. Special thank you to all city residents that do not live in the rezoned area for your support today. What happens to me can certainly happen to you. Do you want me to get out of the way?
Thank you. No, you're fine.
My name is Pat Ponzek. I live at 115 Urquoy, which is just off North Boulevard. I'd like to tell you about short-term rentals. The people that come here come to party. They're here on vacation or for a special weekend. They're skiing. There's skiing buddies, a bunch of them. It's a bachelor party. What's really worse is a bachelorette party. They don't have to go to bed at night. They don't have to get up in the morning. The rest of us do. They motorcycle in the summertime. They snowmobile in the wintertime. When the bars close, they don't come home, go to bed, and they're short-term rental. They make a few turns around the block for it's revving up their motorcycles. And you cannot miss it. They party. They also fight. They like to come outdoors to fight. They shout swear words at each other. Very noisy for the neighborhood. It makes you feel like maybe the fight's going to move into your front yard. That has never happened to me so far. Beer cans maybe, but not fighters. You want to zone Urquoy Street so it can be a bunch of mini motels? Seems like a good idea to you? That's because you don't live on Urquoy Street. That's what I have to say about Urquoy Street.
Good evening. I'm Mary Williams. I live on North Boulevard as well. You just heard from my husband earlier. I was unable to attend the August 29th meeting, but I did review the info from the meeting found on the Cadillac website, and a few things stand out. First, communication regarding the survey. Information was not sent out to those who were affected by the proposed zoning. Many of our neighbors did not know about it. They didn't participate because they didn't know. We found out through the grapevine because so-and-so on whatever street knew who told so-and-so on another street who told us. Poor communication. We certainly did not understand the importance of the survey, seeing that the results are being used to create the proposed zoning. Second, there were 438 total responses. 13.7% own a short-term rental. Where? Could be in California, for all I know. The flaw: The survey should have been open to Cadillac residents only. Those who pay taxes to the city. Only one survey per household should have been allowed. I went in and did it for my address. So did my husband. How do I know that of those 438 responses that one person didn't complete the survey 100 times? This would definitely skew the results, especially seeing the new proposed zoning seems to favor a select few, not the majority of Cadillac residents. The PowerPoint presented seemed to paint a positive rosy picture, excluding many of the negative comments I'm sure were received. What I got out of the survey? Short-term rentals are great, but not in my backyard. I also took offense to the statement on page 27 of the PowerPoint. I quote, "50% of the people agreed that short-term rentals provide a benefit to permanent city residents. We are so-called seasonal residents. We should not be treated any different than permanent residents. We pay taxes. In fact, we pay more taxes than some of your permanent residents. Yet, we can't vote in local elections." Not that it's your fault. That's the federal government's fault, but we won't go there. "We put money into the economy probably more than some of the permanent residents. We support Cadillac businesses. Their churches and their local fundraisers. And most of us use our houses, not cottages, year-round, boosting Cadillac's economy year-round. I can't see how a few more short-term rentals on North Boulevard will enhance the economy except for those who own them. If it is the desire to make Cadillac an elite tourist destination, short-term rentals are not the answer. You will not attract people who are interested in Cadillac. You will attract those out for a good time on a weekend. For Cadillac to become an elite tourist destination, you should start by cleaning up the city. The proposed zoning area is one of the nicest areas in Cadillac. Don't mess it up. Focus instead on other areas in need, as there are many in Cadillac. Elected officials should try to help those in need, not give more to those who already have more than they need." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Williams, and Mike is my little brother. I live on Sunnyside Drive, two houses over from one of the illegal B&Bs that we were encountering. And, you know, thank the city for taking some action on that one. And, you know, since then, it's pretty well stopped, and it's a real blessing. Thank you. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. I was in the hospital, but I would have been there if I wasn't. I have a few questions and comments and concerns about these restrictions that you have on short-term rentals. And in the very first meeting we had at the water place, everybody wanted to know, "How are you going to enforce it?" We didn't get an answer. I don't think we still have an answer. You know, number of renters, renter occupants, two per bedroom. How do you enforce that? Are you going to hire bedroom police? I don't know how you do that. Another thing, you know, the parking. We had parking over there at that illegal one. The lakefront B&Bs, which that was, a lakefront property, that brings in boaters who have boats and trucks and trailers. We had three trailers with big trucks on them parked in our neighborhood for one B&B. One of them was parked on private property. That was a problem, a real problem. You know, I guess the other, you know, as far as the use of the premises for holding specialty events or gatherings, how do you enforce that? How do you enforce people showing up at 6 o'clock on a Saturday night to one of these B&Bs? It could be five or six carloads of people. How do you enforce it? You can't. Some of these restrictions aren't worth the paper they're written on because you can't enforce it. It makes no sense. I guess I'm still waiting for an answer, and how are we going to enforce these things? And I haven't got it yet. And I think that's a real problem.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Markward. I was at the last meeting we had at the water department. I live on South Street, which is the apartment center at Jacob, or actually right next to the Four Winds Test Site Center. And we were actually caught off guard when we found out about this. In fact, we never would have found out if I hadn't received a phone call that day. Nobody in my apartment complex knew anything about the so-called proposal. I had brought up the fact that you want to take an apartment complex supposedly that's on your map, turn that into a possible Airbnb or a short-term rental, same thing, whatever. But then you've got people living in that apartment complex. Now, just imagine for a second if it was you. How would you feel, not knowing anything about this, and then all of a sudden, a year from now, six months from now, "Oh, hey, we're going to turn this into an Airbnb or a short-term rental so you guys," according to the sale offer or proposal offer, whatever the case may be, "you've got three months to move." City of Cadillac's already talking about there's no housing for everybody. Where would they all go? And then the fact that next to us, on the opposite side, you have a historic landmark, from what I can see, which isn't at the site where the first sawmill that came across Cadillac was? Which actually, that property belongs to Harborview, which is across the street from where I live. I don't think they know anything about this. I know Four Winds still don't. As a matter of fact, yesterday, I talked to a guy in the other apartment, because we have two apartment complexes in our area. He didn't know anything about it. So we're still at that point that was made by a couple people. Nobody's knowing anything about this. You guys say you took a survey. 60% or 65% of the people wanted this. Was it because those people have multi-b buildings, houses, that they're going to go ahead? Can I come over and just stay at your house? Is that okay? Is your house on that map? To me, it's not a matter of having these. It's a matter of where you want to put them. I think you need to reevaluate the whole situation before you even decide to even talk about it and put it in the map, put it on the news. I think you just need to go and just reevaluate everything. Look at the other cities. It's my understanding Traverse City was faced with the same problem. They turned it down because they didn't want it. You want a bunch of riffraff people that are up to no good living next door to you? I don't. Maybe you do. If you do, let me know, and then I'll just come stay with you because obviously you don't mind if riffraffs live. Not that I'm a riffraff person, but you know. I'm just saying, if they're going to go party and everything, you know, maybe that's the house to go stay at, but that's not for me. Forty years ago, when I was younger, maybe, but not now. I've got grandkids.
Mr. Markward, your time is up.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andy Cook, and I'm on 1305 Sunnyside. And I didn't know we had a three-minute time limit, so I'm hoping that this is not starting my time limit as I'm writing my address and my contact information. So my wife and I, my family as a whole, got to experience Cadillac about three years ago. And it was just after COVID, and we wanted to understand where we were next in our life. I'm probably about five years from retirement. My wife says I'm about three years from retirement. Maybe I'm seven years. I don't know. But we're getting there. Had no idea what Cadillac was even about. We wanted to stay within a couple hours of the mid-Michigan areas. We're from the Lansing area. We're up here a lot. And my wife and I happened upon Cadillac. Met a guy named Greg Bosher, what a great communicator Greg is, and got us up here. Holy cow. Cadillac has so much to offer. Who knew? We have a real town. I mean, other towns, Elk Rapids, you know, Torch Lake, Houghton Lake, whatever. The towns don't have a town. We have a town, and we have lakes. That drew us to Cadillac. It drew my family to Cadillac, my young kids. My kids are 23, 21, and 19. Actually, my son just turned 22. So we started our journey here with the thought of us having a future here, along with my kids. And when you bring young, successful kids, mechanical engineer major, business with a data science minor, you bring more education to the community. You bring energy to the community. You bring investment to the community. And the community grows together. We saw the house on a Sunday, made an offer Sunday night. Greg shared with us, the family, the names of the two gentlemen, who are brothers, living at 1307 Sunnyside, and Kim and Sarah, living on 1303 Sunnyside. Lovely people. Met them. And we're also told that there's no short-term rental. And Greg warned me with this saying, "So you can't do this by making money." It's never our intent. Our intent was to have a peace of freedom, peace and joy at the lake. Fast forward a year or so later, and we have short-term renters in Stereo, both sides. This is where I really run into my last minute and a half of talking and unable to really share with you my experience. From cars parking in our driveway, parking on our waterfront, people using our docks, sitting in our chairs, sitting in our boathouse. It's okay if we know people. We're educating people every weekend on what area they rented and what areas ours, just so we can then carry conversation nicely. But this is our area. We bought this. To culminating in boats that were craning out of control, jumping into water to stop them because this short-term renter on 1307 rents their speedboat, their pontoon boat, their jet skis. Is that safe? Is that legal? To a massive bong party in our backyard, blowing smoke into our house as we were trying to close our windows. And now I'm on my back deck telling the people, "I get it. You're out to party. I get it." I was young once, too. You're in a neighborhood. My family's here. I have a two-year-old grandson in the house taking a nap. To a bachelorette party that was last weekend, to a video that happened to circulate around about people just screaming at the top of their lungs for no apparent reason other than to share their exuberance at being at Lake Cadillac. It is not a pleasant experience.
Mr. Cook, your time is up. I will let everyone know that there is a second public comment at the end of the meeting. So if you...
You just want to hear more good stories, don't you?
You have them, if you have them.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andy Van Oost. I live at 2005 Sunnyside Drive. I went to that meeting the other day, and after that, I went to the courthouse to see where these lawsuits were filed. And I saw where one of them was. I couldn't think of the other name. But that was like June or July 3rd. So it's nice to see that you guys are taking some action against some of these illegal rentals and doing some enforcement there. And then I went downstairs to check with equalization and see who's homesteading these, if they are homesteading or not, you know? Well, I found that there were a bunch of them that are homesteaded, and so that's primary home that's a personal residence exemption. I'm not exactly sure how all that works, but you guys, it might be something to look into. Anyways, the enforcement issues are the laws that they're violating are zoning, cease and desist, cease and desist, blocking sidewalks, trespassing. They have fires, fireworks, noise, ATVs, no inspections. So the list goes on and on, so there's no real enforcement for that. They will comply if they feel like complying. And then you have to send them a letter, send them another letter, then tell their mom on them, and then if they do it, then they're good. We have submitted petitions. Brian submitted petitions a while back. There are 116 signatures that are all in agreement with what we're saying. And then I have 12 that I haven't submitted. But after that meeting, other people went to the city building and put in FOIA requests for where the cease and desist were and where the lawsuits were filed. So it's like there's one, two, three, four people that went out of their way after that meeting because they were mad. And this wasn't really, that was right after the meeting. Then when the newspaper article came out on Friday, people were ignited. They're going 67% approval rating. Where does that come out of that survey? I mean, I would like to see how that magic number came out of wherever, but nobody believes it. We've got, in two days, I think, someone else was beating their feet on the pavement, and they got another 63 signatures. Another couple were out doing their thing. They got another 20. So my question is, you know, how many is enough? I don't think one person complaining. I think the city should be doing that job. They should, not one person should have to complain about a zoning infraction. But what can one person do, you know? One person can make a difference. These people can make a difference. And I think one person complaining about zoning enforcement is too many. And I'm just wondering if 1,000 will be enough? I mean, what's the magic number, you know? I think John Wallace hit the nail on the head in a memo, and I'll read it again. His memo says, "The short-term rental shall include housing units being rented under the various rental platforms such as Airbnb and VRBO, less than 30 days. Is it clear that the drafters of the ordinance distinguish between permanent lodging, long-term rental situations, and that of short-term rentals? They felt the need to identify which districts were appropriate for short-term rentals. Based on this analysis, my interpretation that short-term rentals are only permitted in TS1, TS2, B1, and B2 zoning..."
Thank you, Andy. Your time is up.
You guys want to hear from us, but you don't really want to hear from us. While we're hearing the voices, they're all around us. We were over to 50 homes yesterday, 50 homes. We got about 22 signatures on our petition. The other people that we saw, they were afraid to sign it for fear of what their neighbors and the residents...
Rick, if you could please address the council, I'd appreciate it.
For fear of what their neighbors might do to them or how they may react to them if they sign such a petition. I tried to explain to them that this is for this purpose only, and they wouldn't sign. It troubled me and my wife greatly. I mean, I've lived in the neighborhood that I lived in now on Atsego Place for almost six years now. Beautiful neighborhood, great neighbors. I know all of them, or most of them anyway. Very peaceful, very quiet. Allowing these Airbnbs in residential areas in the city of Cadillac will do more harm than good. We have a housing shortage. Let's see if maybe by not allowing them, we can increase our ability to have housing for those people that need the affordable housing. And perhaps we can get better answers on that and not see a deterioration of our city in the sense of homelessness. You see what they got in Seattle, don't you? They got homelessness, homeless cities, tent cities of people over five to six. I hear they've grown. They're almost 10,000 now. They're under overpasses. Now, realize we're not at that level, but we could see a problem like that. We already have a problem like that here. I seen it when I was an officer at Mitchell State Park. And at Mitchell State Park, it's a great example for people that are very close to each other. And at Mitchell State Park, it's a great example for people that are very close to each other, living right next to each other, celebrating birthdays. What are they doing? They're hunting, they're fishing, they're playing, they're boating, they're hiking. They're doing all kinds of fun things that we have to offer in our community. That's why they come here. But if we start just opening the doors to everyone to, well, I guess, you know what, I think I'll we'll, we'll move to Florida and we'll have a home, live down there, and we'll just rent our home out as an Airbnb and make some big bucks. It'll pay the mortgage. Great, that's a great idea, but we're neglecting the citizens of Cadillac. We've heard them. We've heard all of them, not just here at the hearings that we've had. We've heard them. Let's hope now that we listen to their pleas, to their cries. We do not want short-term rentals in the city of Cadillac.
Thank you. My name is Michael Fagerman. I live at 200 Vic Avenue. I've been there for 23 years now. I am the broker owner of Cadillac Realty by Fagerman. I've been in real estate for 28 years now, selling properties on Lake Cadillac and Mitchell. Please don't hold it against me, but I was the first one on VRBO 20 years ago. But it was a cabin in the woods on seven acres in Selma Township. I rented it out for about two years, and then life changed, and I sold it. Ever since the recovery from the recession, I had thought about getting back into it because it's a very lucrative business, very lucrative business. And with my line of work, it would be perfect for me, but I've refrained from doing it because of the negative impact on the neighborhood. I won't do it, and I haven't done it, and I won't do it in the future. The people that try and predict that short-term rental would be managed poorly, or the tenants would be bad tenants, that's hard to predict, even if, but the point that I want to make is even if you had perfectly managed rentals, perfectly good tenants, it still diminishes the character and profoundly impacts the character of the neighborhood by putting in the rentals on North Boulevard. Right now, it sounds like my close-knit neighborhood on Vic is just like the other ones further down the street. We all know each other. We all know each other by name. We help each other. Doug and Jill, I'll help them with their dock or their hoist. They'll help me with something. I have keys to all of my neighbors' houses, and I never ask for them. That's the type of neighborhood we live in. We look after each other. And the one thing I can predict with certainty that's indisputable, if you put the rentals on North Boulevard, now the Doug and Jills are gone, and I don't know who's living there. Every week, it's someone new that I don't know who's living there. That is a profound and radical change to the character of the neighborhood. And what we're giving up, in my opinion, is what the whole Kenwood neighborhood is about. Everybody knowing each other, helping each other. You're totally wiping that out. To me, it's inconsistent with public policy, and it's also inconsistent with your preliminary draft. In your preliminary draft, you have a purpose paragraph. Here are some of the purposes of doing this. To increase the safety and security of residential neighborhoods. Preserve and create a favorable quality of life for residents. Protect and enhance property values.
Mr. Fagerman-
I work with buyers and sellers every day. There's no buyer out there that wants to buy a property that's adjacent to a weekly rental. That's usually their first question, is your listing next to a weekly rental. If I say yes, they say we pass.
Mr. Fagerman, your three minutes are up, and you're welcome to come up in the second one.
Well, I wasn't planning on speaking here tonight, but I would like to introduce myself. Diane Berry. My address is 1402 Jeffrey Drive. Little cul-de-sac, four houses. Moved there 25 years ago. I have, am the longest resident of the four. I have renters on both sides of me. They're not the short-term rentals. They weren't rentals when I moved in. I've had issues. The police know the address of my neighbors. There's been a lot of complaints, including the dogs, the fireworks, the ambulances. I didn't buy into that. But I also just returned from a nice two-week vacation in Oregon where I stayed in Airbnb. Second year, lovely experience. I bought a cottage. I rented first time. Friends are, well, sort of knew the friends. State police lieutenant, they brought their friends. They were trespassing. They let their friends trespass. So you don't know who's going to come into the property. So I think that issues, the valid issues that people have presented, they can be issues with long-term rentals as well, permanent. So I think there is a need for designated areas that everybody can agree to. New buildings, like state, maybe more cabins at Mitchell State Park. There's, those are rentals. How about that little strip that they brought the scene on to, the Lake Mitchell side, state land? You know, maybe concentrate, have them in an area that's aren't going to affect other property owners who bought into an area not thinking they were going to be concerned for their safety, perhaps. I have people coming in, and I'm not comfortable working on my yard when I don't know who all the traffic is coming in there. My two sons. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close the first public comment and move on to the approval of the consent agenda, which this week we do have the minutes from our regular meeting that was held on August 21st, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. And then that takes us to a communication that Sandy has for us this evening.
This is being recommended to approve the display of a banner from September 11th through 18th, 2023 for the United Way.
I'd make the motion to approve the display of a banner from September 11th to the 18th, 2023 for the United Way.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. And again to Sandy, there's a reappointment tonight.
It's being recommended to approve the appointment of John Eil. Not sure how to pronounce that. Eil?
Yes.
Okay. To the Cadillac Housing Commission for a five-year term to expire on September 5th, 2028.
I'll make that motion to approve the appointment of John Eil to the Cadillac Housing Commission for a five-year term to expire on September 5th, 2028.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. So that takes us to the city manager's report this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight's city manager's report is brief, at least in terms of quantity of items, perhaps not in terms of pending city council conversation. However, it is a, there was a request to have a conversation regarding direction of the amendment of our zoning ordinance. Mayor, councilmembers, however you want to begin.
Oh, I can start. I I asked to have this added to the agenda. As we can see from the comments we've had tonight, there is huge concern in our community over what we're doing. As I went to last, the meeting on the 29th is, I've taken calls since then, numerous, numerous calls and heard from people, which I appreciate. That that makes a difference doing this job when you're getting the public calling you, because my job is to represent the citizens of the city of Cadillac, as is all our jobs. But what became clear is maybe we as a council have not led in the way we should because the zoning issue is a policy issue, and maybe we needed to give direction on that policy. The the first thing that came to my mind when I went to the 29th meeting and I talked about it was the fact that we have zoning for a reason. People buy property with an expectation of what will happen around them. And R1 is the example, is there are no short-term rentals in R1, and yet we've seen different proposals and different actions that could change the nature of those things. I, as a council member, my own personal ins, not insight, my own personal perception was that we were in the process of looking to update our zoning ordinance, which to me meant, for example, when Mr. Van Oost talked about Mr. Wallace's memo, that right now our ordinance would allow short-term rentals in B1, B2, TS1, and TS2, that we were looking to update those. We were looking to put rules in place. We were looking to see how we do registration and those things. I did not have a perception or an understanding that we would do anything that would change the nature of people's property without talking to them, without getting their input, and that really worries me. And that, I think, comes from us. That's where we need to give direction on what our staff's doing. I've said it before, I had a concern, and most of you know me, I go out and talk to people. And when I was talking to people, many people in this room, and and we talked to four wins and found out that our staff had not talked to anybody before they put on a proposed map that the nature of the property would change, I I was left dumbfounded because how can I tell you what you're going to do for for your property when you bought your property not to have that around you? That that concerns me horribly, and I'm worried about the resources we're expending with our city staff on taking a path that is impacting so many people without us as a council having provided direction to staff. And I take responsibility for that, and that's why I hope through this discussion, we might better focus a path that doesn't have unintended consequences of changing the nature of people's property. Mr. Cook gave a very heartfelt talk at the 29th, August 29th meeting. I don't want someone that's invested in our community be driven out with his family when he's looking at this as a possible retirement area. And and I am afraid with the resources that we have, we don't have the resources to engage more when we're having a hard time enforcing what we have right now, and we need to be on that, and we need to budget for that. So in this discussion, I would like the council to consider, and I'll wait till the end of the discussion to make a motion, helping our manager focus our staff and say, right now, the path I see is we need to see a proposal on how to update TS1, TS2, B1, and B2 of how to handle where they're allowed right now. That we do not change the nature of our other zoning districts because people bought their homes with an expectation that they would not have this activity around them, and I think that'll help them. The other thing, and I've been in contact with some of the planning commission members who I think have concerns also, is that in updating this part of our zoning ordinance, I don't think we want a proposal as a council that changes designation of R1 or R2. Our builders understand the code. People buying understand the code. Real estate people understand the code. If we start changing those designations to say, it's no longer R1, and we're going to allow all these different uses, we're going to have the law of unintended consequence of telling people, citizens who are paying taxes who bought with the expectation that there was no short-term rental in their district, changing that for them, changing the character of their neighborhood. I I just think that's a danger. So the discussion I wanted to have with council is let's consider giving our manager and our staff a direction and give peace of mind to the citizens that bought in areas that they knew, that they checked that short-term rentals would not be allowed, and let them know, we're not going down that path. You don't have to worry because we won't go down that path. I think we need to send that message.
All right. I would like to go ahead and add to that discussion, if I may. I was a little surprised to see this come on the agenda as an agenda item this evening because as with anything, as it as it pertains to zoning or any changes for consideration in zoning, there is a long process that we have to go through. And this, there have been no amendments brought forward from the Planning Commission to the council for consideration. There have been no public meetings, and when we have public meetings, let me back up just a minute. I want to talk about the process in in its entirety so that you understand. This, the couple of meetings that the staff has set up for conversation was simply to open the discussion about short-term rentals because it became an issue in the public. Concerns were brought forward to us. And so the whole zoning ordinance being looked at has actually been going on for years, and it was coming forward to the Planning Commission when this VRBO and the short-term rentals, this whole concern happened. So it's kind of all hitting at the same time. But what I wanted to say to you all this evening is that there is a process that we have to step through. And the process begins with discussion. The process begins with gathering as much information as we can from everyone in the city of Cadillac. You know, having these public forums was actually something additional that we hadn't done before because we knew there was going to be a lot of discussion and a lot of concern. The next thing that's going to happen is, you know, the city staff is going to take all of that information that's gathered. And it's not John Wallace's job to make these decisions. It's not Marcus's job to make these decisions. It's their job to facilitate this process that statutorily is a mandated process that we have to step through so that we're having all of the correct public meetings, which allows, I will tell you, at public meetings, public hearings, you actually get six minutes to talk. So we do give people extra time during these public meetings because if they're there, they're very concerned, and they want to be heard. And so you not only will have the the opportunity, when it comes before, when it comes before the Planning Commission, which is made up of seven individuals that have been assigned to the Planning Commission and have a lot of experience, when it comes to the Planning Commission from the staff, the Planning Commission is going to look it over- commission from the staff, the planning commission is going to look it over, and they're going to either say, okay, we're ready to set a public hearing for this, or we don't believe, as a planning commission, that we have enough information on this, or we feel like the mark is missed on this, and then they'll push it back to staff. But once they are ready to move forward with it, they're going to schedule public hearings. And they're going to, they're going to schedule public hearings, you are going to be notified, if you are in those areas, you are going to be notified that there's a public hearing, and you are going to know that you will want to come to this meeting and be a part of the discussion. Now, there could be one meeting, or there could be two meetings, or there could be three public meetings, but the planning commission is going to gather and discuss and work all of this information to get it to a point where they can bring forward what they believe is in the best interest of the citizens of Cadillac, and then it comes to the council. That's when we start talking about it, from a council perspective, it's presented to us. And at that point in time, we can do the same thing. We can say to the planning commission, you know, no, we're not happy with this, or we believe we still need more information on this or that, and we'll send it back to the planning commission, until we feel like there is a proposed amendment out there that we then can set our public meetings, the council can set our public meetings, to once again, hear from you, the public. And we will have one meeting, or two meetings, or whatever it takes, until we can all collectively have all of the information that we need, and we can move forward as a community. And so there was never any, there was never any opportunity tonight for the council to make any kind of a decision, because the process hasn't even really started yet, other than those public forums, where we were asking for information from you. And look at what it generated. I mean, it generated a lot of great discussion, and people aren't agreeing with each other, but that's what these forums, and that's what these public meetings are for, is because we do want to hear from you. You know, we don't want to leave it up to Lansing to make a decision about how we zone for anything in Cadillac. We want to leave that up to the citizens of Cadillac. We don't want them to come in and say, yep, this is how you're going to do VRBOs in Cadillac, because the people in Lansing don't know Cadillac. We want to have that decision made here, as neighbors. Of course.
So I hear you all, and I'm kind of, I'm a little upset that so many of you think that this is already a done deal. This was, it hasn't even gone to the planning commission yet. I'm a former planning commissioner, that was what I did before I ran for city council, and these are people who aren't politicians, I tend into one, but these are people who are neighbors in every single part of the city. You have planning commissioners, and they are listening to you, they're living there. They, so the process goes through them first. And if we usurp their authority, it's, I don't even know if it's legal for us to dictate what they're supposed to do. Neither of us can dictate what the other does. They start the process, and they bring it to us, like the mayor said. And nothing is, this is not, North Boulevard is not zoned for short-term rentals, no places, nothing has changed. These are so preliminary, and that's why people haven't been notified, there isn't even, these weren't even hearings. You're notified when there are hearings, so that you have a chance to be heard. These public forums were in the paper, were advertised on the website, just to get people aware that this discussion is beginning. And policy is never made from a single survey, ever. It's, a survey gives us information, this piece of information. You can look at the survey, you can take that information, we share the results, because that's transparent, and then there's more that goes to it, okay? So this is just the beginning. I don't think, please don't panic and think that we've sold you all out, because we have friends that have, you know, short-term rentals or something, that is not the case. We're here, and we want this to go the way that the law actually says it needs to go. We'll be the final gatekeepers, in the very end, after it goes back and forth, maybe, between us and the planning commission, in the very end, we will have the final say on whether or not to adopt new zoning ordinances, or new policy, that sort of thing. But this is put in the cart before the horse. I don't have enough information to say, yes, I want us to go in this direction. I'm sorry, I don't. And we need to look at all the pieces, and that's what our really good staff, I know that there are people that are upset with staff right now, but they're meticulous, and they come back and forth, and they're trying to do the right thing. And then our wonderful planning commissioners, who are complete volunteers, that will really, they are the first gatekeepers, and they are good people who care about this community as much as you and I do. And then, once it gets to us, then we make the final decision. But this is not around the corner. This is not, we're dealing right now with, you know, illegal short-term rentals, whether they're illegal or not, we're not sure, because our ordinances aren't clear, our zoning isn't clear. That's the idea, please don't interrupt me, that's the idea with clarifying, for me? To ask him not to interrupt me?
Absolutely.
Okay, if everyone just, please let her finish.
Thank you. That, I lost my train of thought, I apologize. Oh, yes, that, there's a whole, there's so much to this, you guys, there is so much more to this than just saying no. We are following through with people that we feel are doing something that violates our zoning, but our zoning is not that clear, that's why it needs to be updated. We've had multiple issues, I've been here, what, 13 some years? And over those years, we have had multiple issues with zoning, because the zoning is not all that clear. So we are working to make it in keeping with the state, what the state tells us to do, and what makes it explicit, makes it clear to all of us. And that's, so that's my take on it. This is the beginning of the process, please do not think that we have made any decisions, because we're nowhere near it.
Madam Mayor, and Mr. City Manager, would it be possible for me to make a quick comment as well?
Laura, if we could just keep the city discussion, or the council discussion going right now, I'd appreciate that. And then we can hear you after we're done discussing.
Happy to chime in when you're ready.
I'll be brief, I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight, and as far as I'm concerned, there's one reason why you're here speaking, is that you feel like you haven't been listened to. And that's what I think is happening. And they're right, it's very early, but it's never too early to speak out. And I appreciate everyone of you for coming. You care about my city, our city. So, we heard you, I can guarantee you that. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, and I want to echo what council member Ellen Boss says. I know you guys were nervous about the survey results, but, and Andy was asking how many signatures it's going to take, you know, but I appreciate everyone who gathered the signatures, because those sheets, and you guys coming here today, is definitely more important and more valuable than any survey results or any comment results. So I appreciate all the effort and time that you guys are taking to do this. I know when we talk about calling the police on our neighbors to report violations, some people don't think it should be that way, but when it comes to gathering the signatures of your neighbors, of asking their opinions, of bringing that stuff to us, you know, that is the work that matters. That is something that, when you feel strongly about something, you are supposed to be doing. And I appreciate everyone who's put their time into doing that, that is very important, we definitely hear that, and again, that's more important than any, you know, survey results that we'd be looking at. So thank you, guys.
And just as a wrap-up, and I apologize, I just wanted to clarify, R1 is clear, there's no, and I didn't mean to interrupt you in saying it. Our ordinance is clear on that, and that's where I think some of the frustration has been on that. Two is, while I understand, and I understand very well, because practicing law, we do zoning law, and I've been on both sides of an issue going through, council's job is to give staff direction on how to proceed, and how to go through this process. And therefore, it is appropriate for us to give direction, even at this stage, to make sure that resources aren't expended in a manner for options that we don't want. We don't want a zoning ordinance, I'm talking as the public, we don't want a zoning ordinance that would change the nature of R1, period. Therefore, I think it is our duty on policy to go ahead and provide some direction. And what I would make a motion to do is to let our manager know that as a policy direction, in looking at updating our zoning ordinance, we would like to see the option of updating our TS1, TS2, B1, and B2, and how that would handle short-term rentals. That we're not looking for an option that would change the nature of R1, or R2, or the other designations. Therefore, the process can go on, but it gives direction both to our manager and the staff as to how to proceed.
Could you repeat those zones again?
Sure. TS1, TS2, B1, and B2.
Well, yeah, so I have a question for you, Steve, too. And this is kind of also a comment on the process, because it seems to me that we are doing two things at the same time, which makes it very complicated. We are updating our zoning definitions, which we've been, this is part of the master zoning update, I believe it's in an effort, among other things, to be a redevelopment certified community. You guys have all seen the extra map, where there may be three different kinds of yellow, and instead of calling it R1, it's RSF, RSF 100, you know, but the yellow is essentially the residential district. That might still take a long time before we get to that. As we're dealing with short-term rentals now, what John Wallace is putting out, and what we're looking at, is how short-term rentals will be allowed when the zoning definitions are updated. And I'm not sure if this is what Steve is saying or not, and, you know, and I don't know what my thoughts are about it, but I just want to be clear what you're saying, that aside from this process, we need to look at our current zoning definitions. You're not supporting or opposing this, these definitions or this map, we're not commenting on the second part of the process, that this would be an attempt to separate those, and deal with how we allow or don't allow Airbnbs with our current zoning definitions.
That's the immediate issue.
That is correct.
And that is the type of direction that you're asking that we should consider giving, is we should consider halting, or not halting, because you'd still be using all the information that we've got, we'd still be using the information from these maps, from the meetings, but we would be taking a step backward and be applying it essentially to our current zoning districts that may not be our current zoning districts for much longer. Now, that doesn't mean that short-term rentals, once we nail them down, are going to be allowed anywhere more when it does update. But it's my understanding that the zoning updates, again, are something that we need to do, something that I've supported the city doing, and that doesn't really have anything to do with short-term rentals. So these issues came, you know, this is something that I think was on the agenda, updating the zoning. We've been waiting it for a while, I've been talking to people about it for two years, they've been asking me how long we've been working on it, and how long it's going to take. The zoning issue, I'm sorry, the short-term rental issue, not to recap the whole story, you know, we drug our feet on when Lansing looked like they were going to take control away from us, and then in the last year, it became a significant problem, as more and more complaints came in about the neighbors. Lansing has changed a little bit, and maybe it wasn't a good idea to wait. Maybe, maybe we should, you know, at the time, I think we didn't want to waste our time, energy, and effort coming up with something, just to have the rug pulled out from under us. You know, three years later, that's still on the table in Lansing, but that doesn't mean that's going to happen or not happen. So here we are trying to move forward with, one, the enforcement, which we have been sending out the letters, we have been doing what we're doing, you know, trying to escalate that. And, you know, so we find ourselves with these two issues at the same time. So I, you know, I understand, I understand what you're saying, I guess.
That's good. I would like to hear what Laura wanted to add to the conversation at this point, in case we need it.
Thank you, Mayor Philkins. I wanted to jump in whenever I hear a question from a council member about questioning whether something is legal, and as council membershipers was talking about, is, you know, to what extent can council direct what happens below? And while certainly, city manager, and by proxy his staff, are answer to the city council, I think where the line is drawn is that I don't think council can direct or limit the scope of the planning commission's consideration. So I think the planning commission, of course, could perhaps just look at those zoning districts, could consider others, but ultimately, that would come back to this council, of course, as both mayor and council membershiper says, this is a long process, and really, the process hasn't even officially started yet. We're not even to the planning commission yet. It's very rare, anywhere, and I have municipal clients in a lot of places, it's rare to have this level, I should say it's rare, but good, I think admirable, and a good thing to have this kind of robust discussion on an important issue before it even gets to the planning commission, because then a lot of legwork is done, there is already public interest, so that when we do get to the point of providing those required notices, people are ready and prepared, and all set to be engaged. So when it does get to the planning commission, there are notices, you will not have to hear about it through the grapevine. There are publications, not just on the website, but in the newspaper, and if there are rezonies proposed, there are mailed notices, and all sorts of protections. There's public hearing at the planning commission, and then other public hearings at the city council. So there are many opportunities to be heard on it. So I think it's helpful to have this now, but just to echo what Mayor Philkins and council membershiper said, this is in no way a done deal, this is not how things have to be, or what things will be. The version of the zoning ordinance that eventually reaches council might not look anything like this, as it relates to short-term rentals or anything else. This is preliminary work, intended to generate discussion, which it clearly has done. But that was what I wanted to weigh in on, and if council wants to hear more on enforcement, I can certainly report on that as well. I did report on it at the meeting at the water center recently.
Not, I'm sorry, Steve, not everyone was at that meeting? Would you like her to talk about the enforcement piece of it, for those that weren't there?
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind, Laura, not everyone, either on the council or in the audience today, was at the Monday meeting, so if you wouldn't mind.
I'd be happy to. So we had sent cease and desist letters to, I think it was at least 11 properties that we believe to be operating short-term rentals in violation of the current zoning ordinance. Of those, in some cases, the letters resolved the issues. Council decided to proceed with filing two lawsuits against two properties that had received, or generated a number of complaints. Both of those were filed in July. In one case, the defendant has filed an answer, and in the other case, the defendant has not filed an answer, but both cases do remain pending in Wexford County Circuit Court. So those are the current enforcement steps, and I think I heard during public comment earlier, that with respect to one of those properties against which suit was filed, the activity has stopped or died down, so obviously, that's good to hear. Certainly, enforcement under any zoning amendment would be something that I'm sure the planning commission and this council would look at closely to make sure, if and where short-term rentals are permitted, that there are robust licensing and enforcement provisions.
Mayor?
Thank you, Laura.
I have a question for Laura. Laura, can you hear me okay?
I can.
As part of council's further discussion regarding this matter tonight, if ultimately some direction is provided, where they would like to see the city go forward with a plan to essentially codify our community development director's current interpretation of the zoning code, specific to short-term rentals, specifically to essentially create that update that codifies TS1, TS2, BS1, and BS2 as the only zones, the question that I- The question that I'm trying to spit out, that I'm talking and thinking at the same time as I process this myself, is a presumption that even that process would need to first go forward to the planning commission for the review of consideration, public hearing, and then come back to city council. And is there, and this is something you may not even be prepared to address tonight, or even wish to do so in open session versus a closed session, but whether or not initiating that process would be advisable with current pending litigation occurring, whether we need to pause, wait, can we, can we push it forward now? And I apologize for putting you on the spot with regard to that at this moment, but I'm just thinking about how do we, how do we move forward from where we are right now?
Sure. No, I'm happy to address that. Any change to the language of the zoning ordinance or zoning maps requires the entire process, so that would have to go through the planning commission public hearings, back to council public hearings. So if you're changing the text, you're changing it to, whether it's to codify the memo or otherwise, that's all going to go through that public hearing process with all of the notices that I mentioned before. And I don't think there's any problem seeing it open session, as we've been sort of talking this through at these, these public forums, that we are sort of on parallel tracks, where we are enforcing the current zoning ordinance and where we have complaints that people are bringing, we are acting on them, we have brought lawsuits where appropriate. To also still be working toward the amendments we want to make, I don't see those two paths as incompatible, because we have an ordinance right now, and if it's not being followed, we should compel people to follow it. Now, I'll say generally, and some of you in the public who were there last week, maybe you've heard this a little bit before, but enforcement sometimes takes the form of a lawsuit, it doesn't always take that form, right? The first step often is to educate and inform people if they don't know that they're not allowed to engage in this use, and try to seek voluntary compliance. Then we go into a formal letter, often first from the city, then from our office, identifying this is what you're violating, these are what the consequences are, and there's, we're going to have to go to court if we don't get your voluntary compliance. Then we go to the step of litigation. So litigation is not the first step, in part because it's, you know, a costly and time-consuming process, the wheels of justice don't always turn quickly. So that's, that's the process that we have there. But Marcus, I think I answered, hopefully answered your question there, I don't see any reason why the city wouldn't still work through the zoning ordinance amendments while that's going on.
No, they did, and, you know, just as Laura, I know you know this, just a reminder for the general public, you know, the zoning updates that we're looking at is the whole zoning code. The short-term rental piece is just a, just a component of that, and so I, but I agree, I hear what you're saying, so if that's direction council wishes to move forward, that we can do that at the same time.
And the motion I have on the table right now is to save direction of a policy. It's not usurping the planning commission or anything else, but helping, giving staff that option. It's been presented in the paper, and even though we've just had discussions, it's been presented by our community development director, it's option A or option B. And that includes a lot more short-term rentals. I think that's why we're seeing a panic on the part of the public, because our community development director is saying, guys, it's this or this. There's a process to follow, and the mayor and TI have absolutely appropriately stated it. Saying that, though, I think it's appropriate for us, and my motion is to have the manager inform the staff that our policy direction is to look for options in relation to TS1, TS2, B1, and B2. And if nothing else, that adds an option that's been completely ignored by staff thus far, gives them direction that they need to look at that and be working on it. So that is my motion, which is on the table.
I'll second it.
Did you have a question or input?
Yeah, so, and this is, again, just adding one, one extra step to the process. I wanted Marcus, I guess, to talk about the possible timeline for the major zoning update.
Sure. Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Great.
Before we vote?
Go ahead.
I can ask a question for another motion in a second.
Great, great question. I'll be brief, as much as you don't believe me.
Sure.
I'll be brief. I don't have a date specific. If I had to guess, I cannot imagine, given all the feedback we've gotten just on the short-term rental issue, that we're going to be prepared to go to planning commission this month or next month. It's going to take us time to just digest everything and to frankly, continue to update maps and show other options. So planning commission regularly meets the fourth Monday of the month at 6:00. Those meetings can change based on holidays and things of that nature. And obviously, if they're going to meet at a different time or date, it would be advertised accordingly that it's a special meeting. I think that also including the, what I'll call the original zoning districts, those that Councilmember King are mentioning now, for us to include that in the analysis is fine. There's nothing that would prevent us from including it, but I don't, I don't have, I don't have a concern that also including that, or even if the city were to codify that before the entire zoning code itself comes forward causes an issue after listening to what the city attorney was saying on the, on the line. And just to remind everybody that those, those districts were districts that your development director identified under his interpretation of the current zoning code, which is silent to short-term rentals, be it as we define them in, you know, in our, you know, as of today, right? You know, the code talks about boarding houses, and the code talks about motels and hotels. Back when that code was written, there's no such, there was no such thing as a short-term rental. And when that memorandum was posted online a number of years ago, that was posted online after the city council approved the resolution essentially of no support that we sent down to Lansing about, you know, we do not want to lose our ability to control zoning at the local level. We didn't take, you know, a vote in a sense on, on short-term rental opinions, but it was just, hey, keep the control here locally. And then we had John's interpretation as development director, so that people that did have those in the community understand, here's where, you know, it's appropriate, and here's where it isn't. So, does that help?
Well, again, that's my question for Steve. So are you asking that we use the TS1, TS2, B1, and B2 map as a zoning overlay, essentially with, with the new zoning map, and use this as like an option C, or are you suggesting that we direct our planning commission to start the process to?
With the current zoning?
No, no, no. To amend.
So, and that's, that's an absolute fair question. What I'm saying is we need to update our current zoning zones, which they are allowed in right now, the TS1, TS2, B1, B2, okay? And that the planning commission is going to consider that, and whether they want to keep those areas as the only areas short-term rental is, when they do their consideration.
It will allow us to move forward with this, and then when we get bigger to, when we get bigger, when we get onto the bigger discussion of the overall city zoning, this will already be taken care of, and it'll just be overlaid.
I mean, that, I mean, it sounds, as I understand you saying right here, to be a slightly easier process, because these two things coming together, this, that had been on the calendar for a long time, and then the short-term rental, which has kind of cropped up as a recent emergency, have been conflated and have been confusing.
Right.
Because we're dealing with them at the same time, to avoid extra work, to try to wrap it all together in one.
I would agree, and I would just add that I think that all of our hearts are in the same direction, we all just need to be having the same conversation. And it's okay not to agree with each other on every little point, but ultimately, we want to make these decisions here with our community. And so, thank you for, first of all, being here this evening to help us with that discussion, and secondly, being willing to be a part of that discussion.
And I only have one more question.
I thought we were done.
If this, if this passes, then, then, as you said, the planning commission meets on the fourth, so the timeline then for this is probably going to be quite a bit quicker than it would have been doing it this way, meaning there will be moments to be at a planning commission that will be official meeting sooner rather than later.
And if I can add to you on that, and for the public, this is giving our policy direction to give the planning commission idea of what we're thinking at this level, so they know in considering stuff and passing it back up, it's still important for everyone to stay involved.
I would agree. Okay, there's a motion on the table in a second.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, the next thing we have is we have a couple of resolutions that we need to address.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. These next two resolutions are very much tied together. In fact, one could perhaps even argue it's a chicken and the egg situation, because if we don't move forward in a positive way with the first one, which is a request or a resolution that amends the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2024 to appropriate funds to acquire a certain property, then you can't get to, to the next resolution, which is the resolution to, to support the approval of the purchase of real property within the city. What I can share with, with public and with the city council, and I don't know, Owen, if you were planning on, on reading it, but I'm more than happy to read the amendment line.
Pretty clear.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty simple. The city is embarking on a rather significant economic development package, working with our Cadillac Industrial Fund and an out-of-country manufacturer that is in the, in the rubber industry, that's very interested in acquiring land within our industrial area, acquiring property adjacent to it, and then ultimately adding that property to that land base will position the city and the industrial fund in a, in a place where we need to be in order to move the, move the project forward. The acquisition cost is $250,000. The general appropriation request is for $275,000. And as you can see in your packet, it's to appropriate funds to purchase the industrial park lot and pay for surveys and other expenses that may be required. The fund currently has just over $580,000 on hand. We have a map, I don't know, Sandy, if you want to pop it just to show. The map, just to orient you, the gray area is the area that we're looking at acquiring, and then ultimately adding it to the darker orange area. The lighter orange area is where the solar panels are currently in play. And the acreage there is very much estimated, so I do apologize for that. So the first item is consideration for the resolution that amends the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2024.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the resolution amending General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2024.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The next resolution is the resolution that would approve the purchase of the real property accordingly.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve purchase of real property accordingly.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Did, we have a couple of members of the industrial fund here? Would you like them to say any, would you like to say anything to me?
Didn't even see you in the back.
Yeah? I saw him.
Hi, my name is Mike Hamner, I'm the president of the industrial fund. Craig Hewitt is here as well, he's the secretary of the fund. So this is just another long journey of turning that old Mitchell Court burnt-out building that we started five years ago and about a million and a half dollars later of investment and grant funding to actually convert it into something that is, again, working as an industrial base for the city of Cadillac. So, the fund's been around since the 50s, and our goal is to retain manufacturers. The second goal is to attract manufacturers, and this certainly fulfills that. So thank you very much for, for helping us do that.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Okay. All right, so that takes us to our second public comment this evening, and the format is the same as the first one.
Hi, Lori King. I just wanted to bring something to your attention. I suspect your city attorney knows this, but we had a lot to talk today about if and when the zoning ordinance has changed and people's property designations are changed, that they'll get a notice. The statute actually does not require that when there's several, and don't quote me on the number, but I think it's more than 10 parcels being changed at one time. Excuse me, the only notice requirement is a posting in the paper. So my reason for bringing it to your attention is, I want to let everybody know, they may or may not get a piece of mail, but to urge you that you insist that individual property owners get notice, because it's not required by the statute.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, can you clip briefly, and it's not for any more cool stories? Just, I don't want this to be lost on anyone, and I'm sure it's not. And I also don't want to speak on behalf of everybody else here, because I can't, and I'm not worthy to do so. But the passion coming from our group, this group today, I think, was twofold. One is the worry about things being changed, and being changed to something that didn't suit what they felt was the best version of Cadillac. The other is enforcement today, and I think you get a lot of passion from that, and so they, they sort of bleed through. So regarding enforcement too, Laura, I believe the two homes that are under litigation right now may be flanking me on either side, and I'm bookend, I'm the, the cream in the middle, the Oreo cookie. And, no, they both are still very active, so much so that, and I understand this because it's so hard for the city to police this, and so you've asked us to be your eyes and ears, and communicate what you're seeing, take some photos, communicate any information where they're from, to give some depth and texture to an impending potential lawsuit. So we did this as citizens. And last weekend, with another 1307, Sunnyside, another rental group, and the owner of the rental body yelling at me across the street, saying, are you ready to take pictures of me? Are you ready to take pictures of me? While he was training the illegal short-term renters on how to drive one of his watercraft, which I'm sure, that's not legal either. So just please understand the situation we're in. We're trying to be good neighbors, we're trying to keep our cool, we're trying to show the right way to handle situations with family members, youth in our families. And so we, this individual is, I, what I understand, or what I can surmise, is being pursued legally and to no avail. Nothing's changing. If anything, at this moment in time, based on his ire, it's emboldening him to act on his behalf. So now you have members of your community putting themselves in a situation of, I wouldn't say peril, that sounds really melodramatic, but certainly of great discomfort. And so that's a very uncomfortable situation, and what I can end with is, I would urge you to take action that culminates in action quickly. Otherwise, we live in this little land of limbo in which we have to deal with this every day. Thank you.
I just want to add something I forgot to mention earlier. In the homes that we went to, seeking signatures on our petition, their response to us was that they didn't want to sign it because they were afraid what their neighbor might think of. think of them with regards to signing the petition. I was a civil servant for over 22 years, and I know what trust from your community means. It's very important. You all are public servants, just like I was. That trust is essential. Those that didn't sign, every single one of them said to me and my wife, "It doesn't matter if we sign anyway, because council's going to do what they want to do." So I'll leave you with that tonight, but understand, you're losing trust, and I know as a civil servant, you got to earn that trust, and once you get it, you got to have the integrity to maintain it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Andy Van Oost again. Thanks, thanks, that's a relief, but I'm still a little bit scared of what could happen down the road, you know? I mean, when I get the relief from my side of the lake and then it moves to the other side of the lake, I've got one next to me, next thing you know, my mom's got three, four around here. That bothers me. Change is in the residents. Nobody wants to have the government, nobody wants the government to tell them what to do. But this is the opposite. You're saying what you can't do. I wanted to stop the short-term next to me, then I go, "Can I have one? No, you can't have one. I can't have one, but they can have one." So it's really, it's a hot button item. And, you know, none of this is organized, this is just people talking to people. But what I would like to do is get organized. I'd like to get a list of email addresses and phone numbers from everybody, so when we go to the planning commission, we can talk to them as a group instead of going door-to-door and going, "Hey, what do you think? Can you go to the meeting tonight?" So I'll be available after the meeting for that. Thank you, and thank you.
Okay, saying no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order.
I've got something. Based on Lori King's comments that I agree with, because we've looked at the law, I would like us to consider, we can put it as an agenda item on a next meeting, stating that we would move, that we'll be more restrictive than we're required to be, that we will include all the affected properties in notices, whether we have to or not. The other thing I would like to ask the council to consider for direction for the manager to be able to talk to the staff is, I was very concerned in our August 29th meeting that Mr. Wallace was very clear that he did not have to talk to the public. He didn't have to talk to Four Winds, he didn't have to talk to the condo association. And I would like a policy direction from us, we don't care if you have to, ethically, you must. I do not want a staff member riding out as a solo person, carrying out a policy on their own, when I think if we're talking to any individual in this room, if they own property, they need to be spoken with. If we're going to suggest that we change a label on their property that changes the nature of their property and exposes them to something, I think it's so important, it's ethically required, that we have that communication with the citizens.
I appreciate everybody coming out, and I want to thank councilmember King for apologizing for interrupting. That's not something that we do. We allow each other each our turn to talk, and I appreciate that. And I understand the fervor and everything, and I just want everybody to know that that was not me being pushy. That's how we do things. We listen to each other and let each other finish our thoughts, so thanks.
I too would like to thank everybody for coming and speaking out. It still saddens me when I hear people say that the council doesn't listen. I'm hoping this is a good example of, when you speak, we will listen. So thanks for coming, and keep coming. I appreciate it.
Okay. I have nothing more to add other than, again, to say thank you. The meetings are a lot more interesting when there's people in those chairs, so thank you. And thank you to the council and Marcus for some great discussion, so. Okay, well, we have to adjourn to closed session tonight, so I'll need a motion for us to be able to do that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I'll second it. Oh, you got to read it all?
You got to read it. There's a whole lot more than that.
There's a whole lot I have to read, of course. That's why everybody was quiet. I will make a motion to adjourn to closed session to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with pending litigation in the city.
Thank you.
Pending litigation in City of Cadillac v Cassidy Cowe, case number 23-0030949, and City of Cadillac v Neil &amp; Joe Amen, case number 23-0030948, for the reason that an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigation or settlement position of the city, and to discuss a written confidential legal opinion with the city attorney. Invite Adam Majepka, Director of Public Safety.
Second it.
Councilmember Shippers?
She said Shippers.
Yes!
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
All right. I'll see you guys.